And there's Manager Crafton.
Perfect, she has just joined us. We'll let her get settled in and then President Ziegler.
I can't see her, is she on?
She is connecting right now.
Okay.
And Mr. Smith needs to log back in. Jill is with us.
Okay, I see it's 7:01. I'd like to call the regular Board of Manager meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda.
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Cook or Manager Cook?
Yes, I would move to amend the agenda by deleting from the consent agenda items D, G, and H. And then I have a point of clarification. And that is, will we be able to discuss the staff report and the engineer's report during the administrator's report line item, or do we need to do that now? Because if we don't, if we can discuss it later, then I will just leave those on the consent agenda as accepting. Those reports.
And then just answer questions during the discussion part, is that?
Yeah, yes, during the administrator's report discussion down on what I have is, I guess, line item 10? If that's still accurate.
Yeah. That's fine with me unless other managers object.
President Ziegler.
Administrator Jeffrey.
Manager Cook, was that E as in Edward?
No, I'm sorry. Well, maybe I mispronounced it. I meant to say D as in David, G as in God, H as in, or go the opposite way, hell.
Alright, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the agenda? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote? Mr. Smith? Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. President, point of order.
Manager Cook?
Maybe you said it, I didn't hear it. I have a little difficulties here, but for the record, I believe we're having this via Zoom out of the abundance of caution due to the continuing pandemic.
Yes, and I did not say that. Thank you.
No, no problem.
That's in the record now, so. Matters of public interest is the next item on the agenda. Welcome to the Board of Managers. Anyone may address the board on any matter of interest in the watershed. Speakers will be acknowledged by the President. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Additional comments may be submitted in writing. Generally, the Board of Managers will not take official action on items discussed at this time, but may refer the matter to staff for further report or direction that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Do we have any from, anyone from the public who would like to address the board at this time?
I would.
Mrs. Torkelson?
Yes, thank you. In that the watershed district has a goal to preserve and enhance the quality, the quantity, as well as the function and value of district wetlands. Preserve and enhance habitat important to fish, waterfowl, and other wildlife. I was wondering what metrics are being used to measure the enhancement of habitat? I believe that the number of insects and insect species, the number of birds and bird species, and especially the soil health, such as the ability of the soil to filtrate and infiltrate water should be measured before and after a restoration, and then should be monitored for years to gauge the success of the project. So I was wondering basically what, what metrics are the watershed using? I, I know that there have been reports on the fish species, but I don't hear about dragonfly and lightning bugs and things like that, so. That is one issue, and another has more to do with the CAC, and I could wait until the CAC report. I'm not the primary person making it, but it would be like a little addendum to that, or I could just mention it now.
Either way, whichever you prefer.
Okay, I'll go ahead. We made a motion last February that was probably presented in the March CAC, which we made a unanimous motion that the Board of Managers implement a study to list all the ecologically valuable and/or fragile areas in the watershed for protection and preservation from development for the education of the general public, including developers, homeowners, and individuals. I guess I wanted a progress report on that so that the CAC people today can report back and see how that's, if any progress is made.
Administrator Jeffrey, do you have any answers now, or is it something we should put off for a future discussion?
President Ziegler, Managers, I will be in attendance at the upcoming CAC meeting. Perhaps that would be a good time to update the CAC on that.
Great.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? I see a couple of hands up.
Yeah, Rod Fisher, sure.
Uh, yeah, thank you, thank you, everyone. I'm here representing the Duck Lake Lake Association, Eden Prairie Duck Lake Association, newly formed, and just have a quick question. We're trying to become help organize the opening that the city, and we've not heard back from the city, of the, the new bridge here on Duck Lake Road, and we understand that there will be a, some kind of ribbon cutting in the spring, so I'm wondering, just a quick question, if you have any information on that, and I can take it offline, but I just reexpress our interest in being part of that and helping bring, you know, neighborhood and nearby, even the nearby school into that discussion.
Administrator Jeffrey, do you have anything on that?
President Ziegler, Managers, I've been in contact with the Public Works Director of the City of Eden Prairie. They are intending on holding the opening the first or second week of June, and they want to invite the Board of Managers as well as Duck Lake people at that time, so it was my understanding that that is their intent, Mr. Fishers, to invite you as well as the Managers to be a part of that.
Thank you, that's excellent. Thanks very much.
Okay, I see one hand still up.
Oh, yeah.
This is Louise Ludford speaking, and I do wear two hats. One is a member of the CAC and the other as a resident of the northern part of Purgatory Creek, and just wanted to mention that I would, I would like to address the situation that there is no buffer along our association to Purgatory Creek water. The Purgatory Creek watershed at the northern part, and would like to bring that to the Board Board's attention along with questions about two properties along 101. One is Core Trust Bank, and then there's another property that is purchased that is right in the middle of the wetland. And just a concern about that, and whether I drove in there to take a look at the bank, and it looks like there really is structural problems with the bank in that there is a, there are cracks within the, I'm sorry, her dog is barking. There are cracks within the.
Our, our dog is barking because they know that it's wrong, too. The thing is sinking like three and a half to four inches, and Core Trust Bank, the entire building is sinking. It's if we get into the whole thing, it becomes like mafia criminal BS. Wow.
It's a.
We done some digging, and it's, it becomes uglier the farther we dig.
Yeah, and the, the situation is that it's, it's, it's just a resident of Saddlewood Patio Homes Association, and knowing about the north end of Purgatory, Purgatory Creek, and how it runs into Star Lake, Staring Lake, and just wondering why there was a block of, of wetland that was sold, and there have been banks there.
To an adjacent property owned by a conglomerate in the Netherlands.
Well, we're not sure if it's the Netherlands, but it is, it does bring in, it does bring in $65,000 worth of of taxes, property taxes, and because it's Minnetoka, part of Minnetoka, but yet it's the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District, that there are two different like communities that are, that are working with this, this particular area, and just wanting to make sure that there are eyes on the Core Trust Bank and the adjacent property to the south of it, that I think is owned by someone in New Jersey. But just to make, just to make sure that, that the people who are purchasing it and, and are, are aware that this is a wetland, and there's also like a, a water, body, a body of water to the south of, or to the, to the east of the bank, too. There's also, anyways, just to alert the Board of Managers about this particular property of Core Trust Bank, and then the adjacent property that is owned by someone, I believe, in New Jersey, and wondering why property is, is being sold and developed on, on on wetlands.
Swamp and swell, and we don't know what's going on with it and how to deal with it.
Yeah, so that's it.
And it's, it's all of our concern.
So, thank you.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Solviak, but I believe we'll probably have to gather some information on that. I believe there was a, a permit that we issued for a parking lot change, maybe?
President Ziegler, Managers, we deny that permit because of the floodplain issues that they were unable to resolve with it. That bank predates any rules that the watershed district had in that area. Looking at it, it looks like 1998 it was built, so it was post-WACCA. The city of Minnetoka is the LGU. Yeah, any development that goes on in that area would need to come to us for review and approval.
And the last permit we denied is what you're saying.
That is correct.
Okay, and it sounds like it might be, but just a second, Mr. Manager Cook. It sounds like it might be something that we want to put on that list that CAC has asked for, properties that, you know, maybe could be better used otherwise, other, other ways. Manager Cook?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to, well, I'd like to move that we have the district administrator spend some small amount of time to come back with to us as to whether or not there's any rule violations, et cetera, that you know, should be brought to our attention, or if there's any actions that, you know, any violations that we should be aware of and that we can't address that are within our jurisdiction. Probably not, but I think it would be appropriate response to our constituents to be able to spend a little bit of time just summarizing the status of our jurisdiction on that property and whether or not there's any any violations that we could address.
My, my thought is that, you know, maybe back at the time when it was sold, that property was, was sold, it may have been okay, but now with the current rules and regulations, maybe they would not have, but because the bank is continually changing its name, I'm assuming that there's different opportunities for it to be sold. And when looking at the, the bank itself, if you drive into the property and you take a look at the, the top part of the bank, you see that there's cement that is, has a, a fracture in it, and there's a deep, there, there, it's, it, it would be interesting to hear from someone who has knowledge and experience of, of how the ground with, within a wetland moves that causes a, a structure like that to sever and break within the concrete at the top of the building, and wondering, too, if this is why there has been consistent changes in the names of the bank. But anyway, it, it is a concern that that is being used as a bank, or not as a bank, but as it's, it's.
A laundry exchange.
And, and that the, the property also adjacent to the south of it is also sold. Yeah, and just, you know, and if there is a structure there, maybe it can be changed to an educational building for purposes of understanding watershed and the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District. That's it, thank you. Our resident of Minnetoka and the at the north end of.
Just be, just try to fix the watershed, but here we have a building that's sinking three and a half to four inches down.
Thank you. We, we should be moving on.
Okay, yes, thanks for your comments. We should move on.
There is a motion.
There is a motion, and right now we don't have a second. We have a second for the motion. Manager Cook, do you want to restate your, your motion concisely so people can understand?
I'll, I'll do the best that I can. Basically, the motion is for the staff to come back to the Managers with a brief I guess, report as to whether or not there are any rule violations or anything within our jurisdiction that regarding these properties.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Is there a timeline for this?
That's a great question.
Mr. President? Like with other things, I'd leave that to the staff, depending upon their how busy they are and other, other things, but I would hope in due course, but I leave that to Administrator Jeffrey, since he has a better idea as to all the things that need to get done anyway.
President, President Ziegler, Managers?
Yes.
It's a fairly simple review of just files that we have and what's been changed on that site, so March or April would be a problem to bring it back.
Okay. So we're incorporating that, adding that into the motion, so March or April would be the timeframe.
I would, I would move to amend then my motion to add a report back either one of the March meetings or one of the April meetings of the board.
Okay, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please? Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to address the board at this time? Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is reading an approval of the minutes. The first minutes we have is the January 4th regular meeting of the Managers. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move the, the minutes for the January 4th meeting. I have some comments, though, some edits.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Manager Crafton, you have some comments?
Yeah, one is under the, who's present? The staff? I thought we had upgraded the job titles, so for staff, Dick Hudson and Liz Forbes. Those are older, older job titles than I remember, so I just wanted to bring that to staff attention to make sure that gets changed. Let's see, page five, I had something. On line 99. So at the end of 98, it says she said she, though, I think it should be she thought. On line 106 on that same page. Jeffrey will NCA, I think. Maybe I got that wrong. We'll provide Administrator Jeffrey, oh, I think it was supposed to be with NCA contact information. Let's see, page 27, I had something. Line 727, Manager Cook said he, is he his position? I think it should be Manager Cook said his position is. Anyway, it doesn't read right, so that needs to be corrected one way or another. And then down at 760, that line, Administrator Jeffrey reported the has not been, it should be there has not been. That's all it has.
Okay, does anyone else have any comments or questions on the January 4th minutes? Okay, I'm assuming that that's a friendly amendment.
Right.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith? Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Abstain.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the January 19th regular work, work session of the Board of Managers. Do we have a motion on this item?
I move we approve the minutes of the January 19, 2023 regular work session of the Board of Managers.
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith? Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVell?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Abstain.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Okay, the next item is committee reports, and the first item in this category is the acceptance of the Citizens Advisory Committee report in minutes. Did we get minutes for that?
Yes.
Okay, maybe I missed those.
I found them today.
Oh, okay, maybe that's why. Who do we have speaking for the, okay?
I, Louise Ludford in Arne York. We are representing the Citizen Advisory Committee, and regarding the CAC motions for the Board of Managers, there are none. And regarding key CAC discussion items for the Board of Managers, there are none. The meeting on January 16th, 2023, I believe on the, on the website, it said 2022, but then if you clicked on the meeting minutes, the the PDF says 2023, so that would be a correction needed at our next February 20th meeting. The so the, the meeting, we have a number of new CAC members, and so the majority of the meeting was was also spent to help under, help new members understand the role and the bylaws of the CAC. We discussed the projects of Low Salt, No Salt Minnesota Update, the E and O updates about the volunteers for the update, upcoming Chan-Hasten February Fest on February 4th. And we discussed the there was a welcoming presentation. It was just very, very informative for the new CAC members to be a part of this. It was very, very well done. The, there were nominations of officers for the CAC, and planning upcoming meetings was discussed, and also encouragement for people to attend the Board of Managers meetings and communication, so. Thank you. That's, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. You're one of the new members, I understand.
Yeah, yes, Arnie and I, we are partners, and we, we live at the north end of Riley, of, of Purgatory Bluff Creek, and this is Arnie.
Hi.
A retired Navy person and also retired Navy SEAL. I am a retired special ed teacher, and we both have an invested interest in, in the wetlands. I've lived here for 20 years, and I'm look forward to helping communities around the Purgatory Creek Bluff Wetlands to Purgatory Creek to be conscientious stewards.
I, I would have been here sooner, but I had to clean up after a dog.
And he, and he also has an abscess tooth that needs to be pulled, so, so it'll be just mostly me.
And then there's the guitar work that I'm constantly working on, plus banjos and.
So, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I'd like to obviously welcome Louise and Arnie, and I think that Louise did a great job summarizing you know, the action at the CAC, so I'd like to commend her for a job well done. C A C, so I'd like to commend her for a job well done.
Thank you. Any other managers have questions or comments on the C A C report? Hearing none, uh we'll move on to the next item, which is to confirm board representative for the February twentieth C A C meeting. That Terry, do we have anyone?
I don't believe we have anyone as of yet.
Do we have any volunteers?
As long as it's virtual, I could do it. I can't. I'm not moving around a whole lot these days.
It is virtual at this time.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Craft.
Uh Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I just have a a question. Do we record the C A C meetings?
We do that.
Well, I just have a comment that I I think it would be helpful because uh obviously some of us don't have the time to uh you know, attend and but it would be nice to be able to uh well, you know, listen to some of the discussion of the C A C, so. I I unless I'm wrong, I don't think it's a terribly great expense, so I'd certainly like to see see to consider that.
Um President Ziegler, Manager Cook, there are uh if presentations, if people outside speakers come in, those are recorded um and available, but just wanted to let that be known.
Okay, uh Mr. Smith, I believe that's probably up to the C A C, right? Or no? Mr. President, um the C A C has its own bias, the board reviews them. I think if the board had a preference that wanted to communicate, it'd be something the C A C would likely follow. Okay. Thank you. Um the next item on the agenda is to receive the personnel committee report in minutes, and there was no meeting. Is there any update?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. Um the next item is uh receive the Governance Committee Report in minutes. I did we get the Governance Committee minutes?
President Ziegler, no, those have not been completed yet. Um we could either put them on the workshop for acceptance or at the next meeting, whatever is your preference.
Okay, probably the next meeting, uh the next regular meeting, so we don't have to vote on the the workshop meetings.
Uh, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Um it's my understanding that uh there was no recording of this governance uh the latest governance committee meeting, and I believe before that uh when I was on the committee with you, Mr. President, we did report those. And I think that uh that is something that would be a good idea to do so that the the rest of the managers or constituents, whoever would be able to uh know what's uh what's going on at these meetings. I did happen to hear part of the meeting, and there was some discussion. Uh and maybe a question uh to the members, there was some discussion about uh the drafts of the of a proposed revisions to the Governance Manual and something about either discussions offline or in some theme, and I'm wondering if anybody on the committee would be able to think we're to elucidate uh on those those two comments, if I heard it correctly.
So I I didn't realize we didn't record it. Um but uh it seems like it would be a good idea, especially for the uh to make it easier to make the notes. Um but I I recall the general gist of the meeting as being um you know, trying to prepare for a workshop where all the managers could review the uh proposed changes and uh you know, have them uh legal uh review them ahead of time, so we knew if there was any legal reason to uh change or to not change.
Uh thank you, President.
Mr. Smith, do you have any comments on that, or is that still in the process? Uh still in process, but we'll follow up. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so um Governance Committee Reports, I guess that was it. Uh the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And uh my notes show item A, Resolution twenty three dash zero one five. Uh the staff report or the January Staff Report, the January Engineers Report. Approval of Permit twenty twenty two dash zero seven six. Approve the Wetland Restoration Project Payment Application Number Six.
Yep, now, Mr. President. Sorry, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Uh I would move to uh adopt Resolution twenty three dash zero one five uh with a following change being that uh we accept the January Staff Report, we accept the January Engineering Report, and uh we approve the permit two zero two two dash zero seven six in the resolutions that for the proposed resolution step forth in the Engineers Report. And that we uh approve the payment application for the pioneer wetland restoration as set forth in the uh report uh by the by bar engineer.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm sorry. Manager Duvel?
So is this the uh acceptance of the entire consent agenda then?
As revised.
Okay. And the revision was what?
Uh the revision was to move D, G, and H to the action items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please? Yes, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, uh that brings us to the items that were moved from the Consent Agenda. Um the first one is item D, January Construction Inspection Menu Memo.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Yeah, I I don't mean to interrupt it since I asked that this be taken off the Consent Agenda.
Well, I was gonna ask you anyways.
Okay, thank you. Um and the only rea- the reason I I brought this up, and I thought it was the maybe the appropriate place, maybe not necessarily the appropriate place. Uh but uh if we could get a report on what's happening with respect to the permit violations or the alleged permit violations on Lotus Lake. Um I did not see, I may have missed it, I did not see that in the staff report. So that's the reason I I pulled this. Uh that's one reason I pulled uh this item. And the second uh reason I pulled it is is that um I've uh had, we've had some discussions before, and I've suggested that perhaps staff should look into means by which uh we could reduce the amount of staff time and reviewing sites by coming up with a process or procedure for um or permittees to take appropriate pictures from designated locations so that uh staff could have a an opportunity to determine whether they actually need to go up to a site and and make a in-person uh inspection. So those are the two reasons I pulled that item.
Administrator Jeffrey, do you have any comments?
President Ziegler, Managers, uh the remaining violation uh Lotus Lake is the Frontier Trail House New Construction. A letter went out to them um and it gave them a deadline that passed uh in January to get the uh a completed application to us. Um they have given us permit fee and they have given us an application, but um it it does not show everything we need. The biggest thing is we need the financial assurance for them, so with the spring, we can go out to the site and verify that they have uh restored the the soils as required under the permit, which is likely that they did not, um so they would need to pull the saw it up. Um I believe the letter said that we would then bring them to the March meeting uh in front of the Managers, so that matter would come to Managers of March, which hopefully give us enough time to resolve it um so that they can do it right away in the spring. There is another violation out there that um that has not made it here. It was wet. Well, there's the Red Rock violation um and that has, that is where um an individual homeowner has riprap to shoreline, denuded the vegetation there. The D N R has issued a restoration order, the city of Eden Prairie has issued a restoration order, and we have issued a restoration order. Um I would have to review what the timeline was for them to get back with us on a plan, but I can have that report uh for you at the next um time we are meeting. And then there is a new violation up on Lake Lucy Lane in Chan Hassen um where a two homeowners have uh excavated uh an existing ditch without a permit um from the district. This existing ditch goes through a wetland. And it does appear that perhaps they have even uh encroached upon another neighbor's property that was not party to um to this activity. A uh notice of probable violation was issued to them. Their attorney was copied on that, as was the Soil and Water Conservation District, the City of Chan Hassen, the Minnesota D N R, the Minnesota D N R um to officer um and Border Water and Soil Resources. A a um stop work order was issued by the D N R as well, and the city of Chan Hassen has issued a restoration order. Uh we are now they changed uh legal counsel and requested a thirty day extension on it. They were granted a fifteen day extension by the Technical Evaluation Panel. Um that fifteen day extension is not that they have to have it done by that time. It's to give them time with their new legal counsel, and they did retain uh a consultant to work with um to prepare a response to that to that uh decision and decide if they want to appeal it or if they want to try and put forward a restoration plan. Uh they have been informed that they will need an after-the-work permit for the work already done, and they will need to acquire an additional permit when they restore that area to to prior conditions. Those are the violate, those are the egregious violations that we have sitting out there right now. Uh in both cases, I would like to to note that the city has been very responsive, at both cities, Eden Prairie and Chan Hassen have been very responsive and and good to work with on this, so communication has been great.
Uh, Mr. President, if I just couple of questions?
Okay, please proceed.
Uh so the first item that you mentioned uh on on Lotus Lake, is that the one on the west side? Of Lotus Lake?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, that is correct. That's the one that uh that sits on that little knoll next to Sun that Sun, whatever, the Homeowners Association, yes.
And so my follow-up question to that is is uh what what happened to the uh property on the southeast side of Lotus Lake with the riprap? Was that?
Yep, they were issued an after-the-fact permit, um and they have uh complied with the conditions of that permit. I don't recall when that after the fact was was given. Engineer Sobiak, is your memory any better than mine? Yeah, I think it was some nine or ten months ago now.
Uh thank you very much. That's all I have, and unless somebody else has something on the instruction inspection and you know, I would move that we uh accept the instruction inspection memorandum.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call float vote, please, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton? Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to uh approve the Lower Riley Creek Restoration Project Payment Application Number Ten. Manager Cook, you had this removed?
Uh yes, if I may proceed with some questions, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh so I'm trying to un-understand this and um and correct me if I'm wrong, I have, like I said, I have uh some challenges understanding it. As I read the report, there are a number of dead trees and um I'm not sure whether there's a warranty that applies to them and whether or not the subcontractor is responsible. And the reason I asked the question is because I wasn't sure if we had any uh will we have any retainage uh left to ensure that the, if there is a warranty work that the uh subcontractor is responsible for, will we have funds in which to uh cover replacing the trees if if the subcontractor doesn't do it?
Administrator Jeffrey, do you want to speak to that or?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna have uh Engineer Sobiak to speak to that. I know he is, but in discussions with Sun Ram, they initially had requested to close out the entire project, but there were there were the trees noted as well as a final walkthrough to do, um Engineer Sobiak.
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, um there there identified the the twenty dead trees. There's an additional site review that needs to happen to determine if if these trees are covered under warranty or not, depending on the type of damage that was done. Um so that's why in the pay application, we are recommending release of part of the retainage, but still holding back five thousand dollars to cover the cost of the tree replacements should the subcontractor um not do the work. But all indications are the subcontractor has been very, very um open and receptive to working with the district on this.
Okay, Manager Cook, did you have a follow-up question?
Uh only only that, like I said, I was confused exactly how it was written, so there'll be some retainage in the in the amount of what what would be the amount, that just the five thousand dollars?
Manager Cook, that is correct. Five thousand dollars will still be held as retainage by the district if this pay app is approved.
And you're comfortable that that would uh cover the twenty trees if indeed uh they're subject to a warranty?
Correct.
Very good. Um that is all that I have. If nobody else has any questions, I will move to approve the I guess it's the Lower Riley Creek Stabilization Project Pay Application Number Ten.
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further questions or comments? None. Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote? None, Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please? Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager cook?
Yes.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is to adopt resolution twenty three dash zero one six. Proving task order. Zero zero six J for bar engineering to perform. Womp station monitoring services. Manager cook, I believe you pulled this one also.
Yes, the reason I told it is because I had. Questions as to. What work was being changed from, as I understand, similar work had been done on this swamp station. Maybe I'm wrong in that. And then what was, what if anything was being changed? And then how, what? Change, if any, was the. Cost of doing the same services. For the upcoming year versus the last year. I had asked that of Mr. Jeffrey and. I noted that he had sent me something later this afternoon. I had not had a chance to. Review it. So if possible. Can. Either Mr. Jeffrey or Mr. Soviet. Address my questions.
President Ziegler managers, I will. I will start and then. I will turn over any other additional questions to the specificity of the work being done out there either to staff back as well or to engineer Soviet. I will share my screen and pull up the email. That I have that shows breakdown of costs. This is second, I will make it larger. Or not? All right, well. Can you barely see it? So the existing year is twenty seven, seven hundred. Thirty four, eight hundred was the twenty one year. So every year it has declined as we have taken on more and more. Responsibility for the maintenance of the WOMP stations. We are now down to just the one. Womp station in Minnetoka on Purgatory Creek that the the bar engineering handles for us. So. There are no additional services that I'm aware of that are being provided this year that weren't in the past. Step backs. Well, perhaps you want to add something to what they they do for you?
Yeah, so Bar originally ran three stations for the district. And so now we've kind of transitioned to, one of them was decommissioned. And then the other one. Is shared between the Metropolitan Council and the watershed district. And then we should, we also share the operation of the unit. With bar and Valley View. One of, one of the maintenance, I guess. Items is to replace the heater in one of the units. Last year, some of the expenses were. A power box got struck by lightning, so a lot of our electrical. Components inside of the unit had to be replaced.
Thank you, manager cook. Did you have other questions or follow up questions?
Yeah, yes, please. Like can continue. So my understanding is is that the total cost now for. Under this order is going to be twenty nine thousand nine hundred. And if I. Saw the number correctly on the table that was up was twenty seven thousand dollars. And I'd just like to know. What the difference is, is it the difference of that? Data management or whatever. I just want to get a handle on.
Yeah, President Ziegler manager cook, that is correct. It is the the data collection was not included in that number there. So yeah, we go. To the number of the twenty nine nine hundred is the is what the total task order will cost. But assuming, you know, a lot of it is not optional, but projected out mileage going to the site of the things that that may change throughout the year, depending on how many times they get there.
But I'm just, I'm curious if we've had any rate increase from last year to this year. I want to get a handle on. Increases. Not that anybody isn't entitled to increase. I'd just like to know what it is. If there is one.
President Ziegler manager cook. So in the agreement that we originally. Entered into with bar engineering in October of two thousand one. They did note that the rates will be increasing for the twenty three year, but did not know at that time what those rate increases are. So now I'm going to put engineer Soviet on the spot as to what the rate schedule update has been for you.
The the individual rate schedule update, there's been roughly a five dollar per hour increase that will be coming. On the twenty twenty three rates. So that that is accounted for in the the task order and the task order is twenty nine thousand nine hundred not to exceed. So. If it's really dry this year and don't need to do a lot of storm chasing, we may come in less than that. On the flip side, if we get another storm like last year and the things hit by lightning. And things need to be replaced. Some of those costs are also incorporated in here, so.
Mr. President? Manager cook? I just have one follow up question. You put you on the spot, Mr. Soviet, but if it's roughly a five dollar per hour increase. Do you know roughly what kind of a percentage increase that is? So. I'm asking because I can like to know what we may be looking at in on other projects, etc., as a year ago.
Correct. So for the the staff people working on this, that'll work out to roughly. Less than a five percent increase.
Very good. Thank you. If nobody else has any questions. I'll move for adoption of resolution twenty three dash zero one six.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further comments or questions? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith? Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager cook?
Yes.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, our next item is action items and. Item B is the December treasures report. Do we have any motions on this item?
I'd like to move the treasure report is submitted. It's been reviewed in terms of our internal controls and procedures and practices.
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments or questions on the December treasures report?
Yes, Mr. President.
Manager cook?
I'm, I guess if a couple of questions, one, I'm a little confused. If you go to page two of six of the report. And in cash dispersments. It looks like we've paid. There's a series of five visas that have been paid in December. And I'm wondering. When did we approve the payment of those? Those visa amounts?
President Ziegler managers, manager cook, so I knew this would come up because it caught me off guard too. But we were looking at here. So the visa payments that were made on two, one and two, two, they were. I'm sure everyone will recall the joy that was mod and the hotel rooms. And so at the same time that. That they were putting all of those onto that credit card. And we had exceeded, they said we had exceeded our limits. Our, one of our Esri licenses also went on there. So those, the five thousand five forty five and four thousand thirty five were. Back to back payments that were made because that was the maximum allotment that we could make on them. So that we could bring the credit card back down. So we had adequate. Capacity on the credit card to pay for all the things that were there. Of the twelve twenty one and twelve twenty nine, if you go to page. The last page of it, the visa activity report, you'll see annual son maintenance. It's the time of year when we look at, you know, what do we have in the data budget? What are we going to need for next year? What should we make for, you know, what acquisitions should we make at this time of year to be prepared for next year? So. Pretty much all the things that you're seeing down there through the smart press. Were was what is on those other ones as well as an additional Esri license. Esri, I'm sorry, Esri is the G I S software that we use. So. It was an additional desktop license that was gotten for our green core member who happens to be. Really quite proficient at it. Nice little bonus.
Well, Mr. President, I'm follow up.
Manager cook?
Well, I'm a little, so. We made cash dispersments. But we didn't approve those and I, my understanding is. We can't make, we don't make payments without approvals. And, you know, so this is, if that's the case, this is troubling. It would be contrary to, I believe, our longstanding policies and and authority. And, you know, I can certainly appreciate the need to perhaps, you know, cover bills and that, but or. Charges, but there are other. Ways to do that, and I don't think it's. I don't think we're supposed to be doing it because that's not our process, you know, and procedure, and we should, we either need to increase our credit card. Limit, or we need to change our policies and procedures. To allow for extensions or exceptions. And sure, everybody or some of the people could certainly have. In fact, I know in my case, could have certainly charged things to your own card and been. Been reimbursed. So I find that this. Under the current rules, not an acceptable process. Any of the process and procedures need to be changed. The credit card amount needs to be increased. And and given the fact that. In fact, I think we noticed the fact you were going to be at mod and we're all there, we could have. Probably actually. Had a meeting and approved this, but that that. So those are my concept. I don't, I, again, I'm trolling that. So. That's on that issue.
President Ziegler manager, I would like to respond to that because a couple of points to make.
Administrator Jeffrey?
One is the the acquisition of rooms was was approved by the board through the process. And so. The, so that was an approved expenditure. And then two, I do have discretion up to five thousand dollars. Those are the two points I'd like to make. I don't disagree that perhaps we should revisit the policy and. Decide, you know, what would be the appropriate or the best way to do it, but.
Well, Mr. President, I just need to state for the record that these are way more than. Than five thousand dollars. And I've already said enough on. The other reasons why I don't think that those payments were appropriate. But I can move on to my next order of business. I'm gonna go back to, oh, stay on the cash dispersments. I've had a series of communications. With Mr. Jeffrey about. Per diem claim form that I file beginning of December, and to my knowledge, that has not. Been processed yet. And I'd like to know the status of that. And I say that because it's my understanding that the item that's listed on page one. For a payment to me has to do with a per diem. That I submitted and January, under about January fifth. So. One of. Have you found that per diem claim? Have you been at a chance to review that? I sent that in several emails now. And. You know, it's now over sixty days, so.
I will look into that. I had thought we were caught up on all of yours.
And then with respect to the. Per diem claim that I made with respect to the seven hundred. It's come down to seven hundred forty dollars. There are. Several items that. I can try to see if I. Sorry, find my. Find my documents here. Please bear with me here in terms of. So with respect to the. My form that I filed on January fifth, I had. In reviewing that I had one error. And then there. I believe it is, let me bring up my spreadsheet here. Sorry, I don't know. So on that one, I had. The way my spreadsheet is set up, if I enter something under the date column. It populates the per diem. And so there was one where I entered it in order to be reimbursed for a. An expense and that triggered an erroneous per diem, but. I had put down for. Two per diems because I had spent. Two days reviewing the website pursuant to the statements made at the September meeting. And provided extensive comments. On the website. And I believe it was President Ziegler who specifically said. That if anybody had any. Comments, they could submit those. So I did that and that was. Basically two per diems that. Were not included in the payment, which I believe I should be compensated for. And then the. The other item or three items for. The governance committee is. I was the one making. Changes to the governance manual and those times were spent. One incorporating changes made by C A C member. Another one was incorporate changes made by. Mr. Jeffrey. And another was to finalize that to. Ready for submission to what turns out to be the, you know, to the governance committee. So I think I'm entitled to. You know, compensation per diem for those efforts. So for a total of an additional six hundred and twenty five dollars. So. Perhaps what would be best is if. We have Mr. Jeffrey discuss these with. Manager. Craft in the treasurer and then take it to the. If necessary, to the accounting and finance committee. Or review and approval. So that's what I would propose with respect to that. And. I can provide the detail. That I've just said to Mr. Jeffrey. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I guess I'm confused. I thought in our governance manual and previous. Meetings and stuff, we have. Approved one per diem for reviewing the board packet. I don't. Don't recall any discussion about. Per diems for other activity. Other than meetings that were approved by the board.
Well.
But. Maybe one of the things to be done is to review the. Existing. Bylaws and see. See where we sit on that.
That's why I suggested we go through the process that I suggested. As well as the fact that. We do have several. Laws on the books. Providing for. Payments. So that's why I suggested the process.
So uh would we include legal in that to uh to review the. Current bylaws and uh.
Would be fine with me, whatever. With whatever either staff, treasurer, and the accounting and finance committee decide that they want to uh. How they want to proceed.
Uh do we have any comments from other managers on how we should proceed here?
Uh President Ziegler, so we can certainly look at that, but my understanding was exactly what you have already stated. That we get one prep and and the rest is for approved meetings, so. Uh we can certainly take a look at it, but. I concur with what you've stated already as was Ben stated process.
So is there um a pending uh meeting of the finance committee that would review it?
President Ziegler, managers, yes, uh April or excuse me, February thirteenth, we have a meeting scheduled for the audit and finance committee.
And this is something that would be taken up at that time?
We certainly could, if that's if that's the pleasure of the board or the audit and finance committee.
Is it something we should be voting on, or do you think it's uh not required because you have the information?
The president's managers, I think this is in the germane of the audit and finance committee. I don't think it necessarily needs a vote. We can just add it to the agenda for that that meeting.
Okay, uh manager Cook, did you have anything else on the the uh? Sorry, the treasures report?
Um I I do just have a a couple of general uh uh comments, first of all. Um and correct me if I'm wrong, and and I don't have to go through any more detail if we're actually going to have a workshop. To go through our uh twenty twenty-two numbers. Uh where we ended up and the impact, if any, on our twenty twenty-three budget. And uh so uh if we are going to have that, then I will. Uh forego any more detailed comments on the uh. Fund performance analysis table, I guess it's called. So is that confirmed?
Yep, President Ziegler, manager Cook, that is correct. That was the intent at the workshop to uh. Bring forward um our final uh expenses for twenty twenty-two and any implications. Um that might have on future budget.
And then, Mr. President.
Andrew Cook.
And then could I just clarify that can we have uh as part of that? Can we have a discussion of the uh multi-year project performance analysis as part of that, so make sure. These numbers are, I guess the term is footing, and I think that's the accounting term.
Yeah, President Ziegler, manager Cook, yes, I will be prepared to speak on that. I have done a little digging with Red Path and and. Found out the origin of the original numbers, which will have a uh, which will make a little more sense, that's why. Uh the table itself doesn't necessarily jive very well, so.
And then my my last comment, Mr. President, is that I, you know, I continue. Is the numbers, oh. The numbers can grow under the Visa table, but uh you know, it's my understanding and talking to other accountants that. You know, recording in our books and records that they pay or pardon, A E. Is a uh, is the credit card is not appropriate accounting. That credit card is simply a financing mechanism, so um I think that's something to uh, you know, be discussed as well. At that time, so I I won't belabor the point if we can cover that as well during the workshop.
I saw administrator Jeffrey none.
President Ziegler, managers, yeah, that will be for the managers to decide how they want those accounting practices to be, so.
My understanding is you've added it to our list to do that meeting.
Yep.
Okay, uh.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, any further questions or comments on the uh treasures report? Hearing none, we have a uh motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith? Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVille?
Where do you go?
I see him at the bottom of the screen, but he. Will maybe come back, uh manager Cook?
Uh this is a uh motion to accept, correct?
The treasures report, yes.
Uh yes.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Manager DuVille? Motion carries four to zero. Manager DuVille absent for the vote.
Uh yes, for me.
Yes, the motion carries five to zero.
I keep cutting.
Should have stayed in Arizona.
Okay, um. The uh next item on the agenda is uh resolution twenty-three zero one seven. Approve the paying of the bills.
I'd like to move that we pay the bills, um resolution twenty-three dash zero one seven.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this item? Hearing none, uh can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith? Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DuVille?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, um the next item on the agenda is to. Adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero one eight. Waving Smith Partners. Uh conflict of interest, so they may work with uh Nine Mile Creek. Watershed District and Riley Purgatory Watershed District for purposes of drafting an. Agreement for a shared office assistant. Do we have any motions on this item?
I'll move that we adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero one eight.
All second.
Okay, we have um motion and a second. Um do we have any discussion on this item?
Uh, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Um I'm concerned that uh unlike certain items, uh this conflict uh. May not be waivable under the uh Minnesota uh rules of ethics. Uh given that uh. Uh. Given that we have two parties and may have uh different demands and or conditions, and so um. I I believe that even passing this, that um it's not appropriate. Um even if not expressly prohibited, it's not appropriate for having the same lawyer representing both parties. Uh on a, some type of a contract or agreement. Uh where their interests may not be aligned, and therefore. I recommend that we uh vote against uh this uh resolution. Um one does it. Having having been a lawyer for a long period of time, whether or not it's specifically prohibited, it is a no-win situation. And uh people being human may not bring up issues uh on one side, the benefit of the other. Um although one could, one may argue, there are uh. Uh both on the same side, they're not both on the same side, so. Uh absent seeing what the deal points might be. Uh at this point, I don't think it's possible to vote to waive a conflict when we don't know the extent to which a conflict may. May exist.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in favor of this resolution. Um Bowser's encouraging us to work together and collaborate on as much as they can, even with uh. All the one watershed one plans they're um pulling together across the state. Um there, you've got SWCDs, you've got counties, and you've got watershed districts and WMOs all working together. Um. They've been really promoting, and and so in some of our grants, like the chloride grants, we we work together on things. Um all the time, so I don't think. Since both parties are amenable to this, and there's benefits to be received, but gained by this from. Reducing the costs, and we've worked together with Nine Mile all the time, we. Um we've had several projects, and we've done that for years with them, so I don't see um an issue here. Um I trust that um. Uh Council Welch has done a good job in pulling this together, so I'd like to support this resolution.
I would concur.
Mr. President?
I believe uh Mr. Smith had his hand up.
Okay.
I certainly can speak in whatever order you wish, but I I guess I had several comments I wanted to make. Um manager Cook is familiar with rule one point seven of the rules of professional conduct, but I just want to review it for the other managers. Um this is the rule that we reviewed in making a judgment about whether we could. Competently uh address this and and prepare this contract on behalf of both parties. Um so this is a defined as a concurrent conflict of interest because it would be representing one client that is directly adverse to the other. And generally, when you have a negotiation of a contract, that's understood to be adverse uh situation. Um. The rule says in part B, notwithstanding the existence of a conflict, current conflict of interest. A lawyer may represent a client if the lawyer reasonably believes. That the lawyer will be able to provide competent and diligent representation to each affected client. The representation is not prohibited by law. The representation does not involve the assertion of a claim by one client against another. Client represented by the lawyer in the same litigation or proceeding before a tribunal. And each affected client gives informed consent confirmed in writing. So our understanding uh has been, and I would certainly look to Mr. Jeffrey to speak to the. Details of how this arose and how the discussions with Nine Mile had proceeded. But there was a mutual desire to share an office assistant. Um and I think they quickly, uh in terms of Terry and Mr. Anhorn. Arrived at at terms that seemed workable. And then it was a matter of writing up this agreement in a form that could be approved by both entities. Certainly, if there is any hint or any reasonable expectation that there would be. Um disagreements about these terms. Um or where the interests of the two watershed districts would be. Really materially different in in getting to this agreement, you would not want to um. Represent both of the watershed districts, so. Um I would just look for an affirmation from Mr. Jeffrey or or any concerns and and um certainly respect the desire of the board. But our judgment has been that we can competently and diligently prepare the agreement in a way that meets the interests of both of the parties. Administrator Jeffrey?
President Ziegler, managers, yeah, a little uh brief background, um. Administrator Anhorn and myself met at bond. We discussed that we both needed some additional help. Uh he said he didn't believe he needed full-time staff, and I suggested at that point, well. Perhaps we share a position. We then met uh after that. With uh Mr. Anhorn, myself, and staff from both Riley Purgatory and Nine Mile. And worked out the job description, scope that they would be doing. And uh the salary range as well as the um. The split of sixty percent, forty percent between the two districts. As well as who would be responsible for that staff, they would be an employee of. Of the district, and we would invoice um Nine Mile for uh. For that service um to be provided, so we we have already worked through. Um most of the details, administrator Anhorn, myself, I would also note um. For the manager's consideration that at their uh February meeting or at their last meeting, excuse me. Uh Nine Mile did waive the conflict of interest uh for Smith Partner.
Manager Cook, you had asked to talk.
Uh yes, please. Well, first of all, this. Uh may or may not be premature, but you know, not having seen uh the proposed business deal. Uh also limits the ability to comment on whether or not there is a conflict, if conflict is. Waivable, and I'm not, uh I am not convinced that. Uh the requirements of one point seven B have been met. Uh you know, in that regard, and so in that respect, I would. I would move that this be tabled and tell we have been presented with the proposed terms of the sharing arrangement. I also say that um. This is. I think there are there are better options uh to do this. You know, on a X days, I don't know, I don't know the details, how you're gonna go about sixty, forty, or whatever it is. There are ways of doing that. Um there are also ways of depending on. On who's doing what, I think the the issue, there's an issue about. If this is quote unquote, the district's employee and we're lending them out or. But it's uh it it's a morass, and I highly suggest. Uh that one talk to specific employment council first. Uh as to their recommendations on such an arrangement, uh. Uh you know. Uh there there's a lot of uh, you know, details to to this, so. I move this be tabled until we've been presented with the proposal on how to. Uh and what's being proposed as far as uh changing it, and then at that time, we can, we can uh. Move forward on whether or not to uh waive the conflict. And how you can waive something when you don't know what exists.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Oh.
Um we have a motion. Do we have a second? This administrator Jeffrey, did you want to speak?
No, I apologize. I was just asking, I was going to ask which motion, but I I remembered, so. My apologies.
Okay, so the the motion was to uh postpone the decision. Uh prior to that, and that motion for the record has failed for lack of a second. So there was a motion on the table to waive the conflict, I believe. Is that correct? Okay, and um. Yeah, so we're back to that motion. Any further discussion on the motion to um. Adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero one eight, waving Smith Partners conflict of interest.
Well, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
You know, there's an old adage. Uh you can only serve one master, and I think that is the epitome of the of this, and again. There's no, there's no way to be able to intelligently uh waive a conflict when. Not know the details of the structure because. Details are everything when you're dealing with these issues, so I encourage people to vote no on this. Until we have a better idea, understanding of what the proposed business terms are.
Okay, so just so we're all aware of what the next step would be, if we did. Uh adopt this resolution, we would then see a contract. Is that correct to uh approve for hiring this uh position?
President Ziegler, managers, that is correct. Uh Smith Partners would prepare the agreement, that agreement would go back to both the Nine Mile. Board of Managers as well as the Riley Purgatory Board of Managers for approval.
Okay, any further question? Uh manager DuVille?
Manager Duval.
So our watershed would be the would be the primary employer. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And is this an at will type position?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So as I understand it, it would be similar to, you know, we have Carver County provide some services for us and there was a particular individual that provides those services and we pay for the services we receive.
Yeah, that be akin to a president's as well. I did speak with Karen Kill and Jay Riggs. They have a similar arrangement where Brown's Creek Administrator is actually an employee of the Washington SWCD.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So one last comment. I don't know why all the information wasn't set forth in a memorandum when provided to us prior to having this product. And and again, I've said this before, you know, we should be receiving this information in written form in advance so that we can make educated decisions.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote? Mr. Smith?
Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Andrew Pedersen?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to adopt resolution twenty three dash zero one nine. Approving Task Order forty three for Bar Engineer to develop an ecosystems health action plan. Do we have any motions on this?
I'd like to move this resolution twenty three dash zero one nine.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So first of all, I'd like to know if this was approved. Where is the money coming from?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, this money will come out of the tenure planning fund. We currently have in there stated in the memorandum that that there is one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars allocated to that fund for the twenty twenty three fiscal year. The proposal being put forward is one hundred and fifty eight eight, of which seventy three four would need to be committed for this year. So we do have fund within that tenure plan to cover this. I would see this as the initial step in the next tenure plan update.
Mr. President, if I can continue.
Manager Cook.
Well, my concern here is, in fact, we're looking to do something without having looked at the entire tenure plan first. And we should be taking a look at the entire tenure plan before we decide on adding items piecemeal to this plan. I don't believe that's a proper planning process to go and piecemeal add add items. And so this should be part of the tenure plan process. And I don't see why we should be spending this kind of money at this time, we're agreeing to spend this type of money at this time. Before we even know how it fits into, you know, the tenure plan. So I this is way premature. Not part of a proper planning process. This should be included in the review of the tenure plan. I don't believe that the money allocated for the tenure plan was intended to cover this kind of you know. It's for the planning. It's not for GIS data. It's not for soil health. It's not for technical advisory. It's not for ecosystem health plan. We do have fifty thousand dollars, I believe it is, in the budget, having to do with, I believe, soil health. And if we have any any place we have funds to spend, it should be that fifty dollars, I think I have the number right, that we specifically put in the budget. Okay, to look at this issue. So I move that we send this back to staff and have them come back with a plan that fits within the fifty thousand dollar budget that we have for this very topic. And that we and that I would imagine would involve coming up with how this whole concept here plan. Generalities as to how it could be implemented, et cetera. And then and then as part of our plan, then we can decide go through and make the appropriate changes in in the twenty twenty four plan. So I move that we again, as I said, I move that we amend the motion to have staff come back with a proposal to summarize what this type of an item would be and that we include this in under the budget and for the fifty thousand dollars for soil health development. And that we include this as part of our tenure plan review.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Hearing no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have any further discussion on the resolution twenty three dash zero one nine? Administrator Jeffrey, is there something you want to say?
President Ziegler, managers, I guess I would like to speak to the to the planning effort and and what this document is intended to be. And it is intended to be a scoping document for our plan. We've heard a number of of different things about when we do our project prioritization, that there are there are aspects that we aren't properly evaluating in that. So it would fit how we change our project prioritization plan. When we talk about our regulatory programs, we talk about green space preservation or our conservation easements, things like that. This document would be the scoping document that would let us do it. It would also allow us, the technical committees, to engage with our partner communities to get their input and decide, see what is already going on in different places? And how can we fill in those gaps? How can we augment what's there? How can we make our tenure plan actually work for everybody in the district? And and consider these ecosystem health parameters that are not currently being looked at. So that was the intent of it was to scope our tenure plan and all of this would feed into that.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
You know, this literally goes beyond scoping out a tenure plan, at least if you look at the table. So I have to discount, you know, what I just heard. And you know, on that basis, this is going to implementation as opposed to a plan. And right now, as I see it, you know, at best, we'd be looking at the ninety seven hundred dollars at best. And we need a better skeleton and a better discussion of how this works into doing the tenure plan. This is this, I don't believe this anyway, should perform becomes a kickoff or reviewing the tenure plan. I think first of all, we have to have a review of the tenure plan as it exists, and then we go from there.
Any more discussion? Mr. Smith, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
I heard yes.
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Manager Peterson?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is resolution twenty three dash zero two zero. Approving Task Order forty four for Bar to design new inlet configuration for Lake Susan Park Pond reuse project. Do we have any motions on this item? No motion?
I'll move this. I'll move resolution twenty three dash zero two zero.
And all second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion on this item?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
I'm trying to remember the exact words you did. You said you said something about planning. Well, as I read this, this is more than planning. Involves, you know, design permitting, project management, construction administration. You know, et et cetera. It seems to me that and and I'm trying to figure this out, but there's a six thousand four hundred and sixty dollar item at the bottom of the heck page, oh, we're going to take six of seven. It seems to me that we should be, we've had this discussion before, we should be troubleshooting. Once we can reinstall this, exactly what's happening, what are the options? We should either be doing that or if I heard Mr. Solbiak said, well, the answer is you stick a damn culvert down vertically and you stick the pump in it and you pump the water up. And if that's the case, then, you know, if that's what we're reviewing, then let's be specific and say that's that's what we would be approving. I'm not convinced at this point that that's what is needed. Whether or not there's other pumps, self priming pumps, maybe it costs more, maybe it costs the same, I don't know, but I don't have the data. So, you know, I used to do work for one of the leading pump manufacturers in the country. So I know there's all kinds of variations when it comes to pumps, self priming, non self priming, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it goes on and on. And so it would seem to me that we should be we need to pay money to do some troubleshooting. Find out exactly what the issue is and what the answer would be or what the recommended answer would be. Unless Mr. Solbiak saying we already know the recommended answer, then why do we not need you know, optional tasks, number one? We just go and 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 do to the design. I'm not convinced that you know, sticking a vertical culvert in and sticking the pump in closer. I mean, I can envision all kinds of issues right now because of the slope at the bottom, et cetera. So again, I I think this is this is, you know, premature and we don't even if I'm not mistaken, do we even have an estimate as to what the cost would be of of the construction? And if not, why are we approving something where we don't even have a ballpark number as to what a what a a cost would be?
Just a clarification, I'm I'm pretty sure I read the agenda item. So Task Order forty four for Bar to design new inlet configuration for Lake Susan Park Pond reuse project.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
Mr. Solbiak, do you have any responses to Manager Cook's questions?
President Siegler, we we put the optional tasks and one of the reasons being is with any type of project, we cannot go in and ensure that the proposed solution will solve the problem. That's why we put the optional task in. The challenge that we have with the optional task at this time is it's winter condition. The inlet, the intake is not in the pond right now. There's no way to operate it without that intake. So the optional task would be troubleshooting as best as we can. The piping systems that are there to make sure that they're not leaking and to be checking some of the valves to make sure that they're not causing the loss of prime. In discussions with the contractor in the city, there's a strong assurance from them that those are not the problem. But we personally at Bar have not observed it. So we're basing it on that. Based on their operations of the system and the contractor's history with the system, we're fairly certain that it is the intake that's causing the the loss of prime and that some modifications to the inlet would remedy the problem. With respect to the estimated cost of construction, that is something that we have not looked at in terms of what the revised inlet would take. That is one of the tasks that we would be doing as part of the initial design.
Well, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
You know, I I I move that we amend this and we only prove that this task order having to do with the optional troubleshooting investigation to confirm this because quite frankly. Yeah, let's put it this way. I have my doubts as to in the degree in which we should rely on on any any party as to determining it and Bars are engineer. And I think we should be having Bar do the testing. And then we come back and, you know, if they confirm, hey, everything's right, it's got to be a design problem. And we come back and have them, you know, do a design. And then they come back and do the design and they say, okay, we want to go forward. At that point, then we'll say, okay, here's the money for going forward, doing the contract, permitting, you know, et cetera. So I believe we should be, this should be amended to break it down into three phases. Phase one is option task one. And then phase two would actually be based upon that, a a design evaluation. And then number three would be to to prepare for construction.
Engineer Solbiak, do you have comments with regards to this manager Cook's questions?
President Ziegler, may I interject a moment? There's some, there's larger that's germane to this and that would be the loss of another season. By going through that process, we rely on our partners. Right now, our partners are unable to utilize the irrigation system. They don't have an alternate irrigation system because they disconnected from the potable water supply because of this project that was going in. So I do believe that needs to be considered through all of this by going through several phases. We've now extended this out through this growing season. And once again, not only are they not irrigating and we're not getting any water infiltration, we also are not getting any additional treatment from the batch.
Well, Mr. President.
I think Scott was going to say something.
President Ziegler, I was just going to echo what Administrator Jeffrey said. The city has expressed frustration with the lack of being able to use the irrigation system primarily last year with how dry it was. And they they strongly mentioned the desire that the system be functional this spring as early as possible, to the point that they've even mentioned disconnecting the reuse system and connecting it back up to the potable water.
And?
Yeah, well, yes, I mean, doing, there's a methodology out there for working these problems. And it's the methodology that I mentioned. And, you know, if Chan has and wants to go hook it up to the potable water, you know, they can do that, but we should know the extent of the issue and the reasonable and what it's going to cost to fix this, as I recall, this was all of the district's money and the district's idea. So I find it a little difficult that the city should be, you know, or have whatever its complaints it may have when we're trying to do them a solid, and as I recall, we were proposing to try to come up with something that was going to cover not only this ballpark, but I believe engineering firm up the hill, another company across the street. Originally, I know those fell through, I believe, because of the individual, you know, you know, landowners and final thing I say, you know, not having some water in a ball field isn't the worst thing in the world. You know, to have happen if we're going to do this, I think we do it right. I mean, I know that there are other pumps out there, maybe the pump engineers will say, you know, I'm sorry, this won't work, there's no other pump that works, but I know you take a well and you can stick a pipe pump on the end of a of a, of a pipe and stick it down in a well and it'll pump it, you know, thousands of feet, so you know, I have some experience in this, this case, so I just don't think this is the methodology we should go about doing this. And I can't imagine it would take that long to do the troubleshooting first. And if it's as relatively straightforward as Mr. Solbiak said, then you know, we're not going to lose a season. Can't take that long to determine, you know, what the issue is. And, you know, I think I've got a feeling the design is almost done if it's the case of putting in a vertical culvert and pumping it out, so losing a season, I think, is a red herring, to say the least, so that's all I have, thank you.
President Siegler?
Yes, Manager Crafton?
So, as we've been trying to grapple with this and our administrator and engineer have, there have been a lot of different variables, sometimes they're out of people's control or the weather issues or whatever. I would think, I mean, I guess I have full confidence in Engineers Solbiak that if they're thinking through this design and trying to do something that they're gonna, they're gonna figure out what needs to be done and what, where to go from here, so it's important for them to have the time to do this design before we start going into other phases, so I, I have confidence that the BAR will come through and figure this out for us or let us know if they see a problem, so I'd like to support this.
This, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Yeah, I'll just make one last comment, I'm sorry, that kind of a proposal just, you know, doesn't, doesn't work, doesn't hold water. Been in this construction business a long period of time, you take it step by step. Second thing, we don't even know, so you have an option in there, I don't know, are we voting to adopt the option? Are we not adopting the option? I, I mean, I just ask people to put the ducks in an order. And like I said, we're not going to have any more delay by taking the short period of time to find out what is the issue, and BAR is our expert. It's not the city, it's not the contractor. You know, this is a contractor that throws, my guess is not a fluid dynamics engineering company.
President Siegler?
Manager Duval?
Can I call the question? You certainly can. So, do we need to vote, I'm going to a vote, or?
Yes. That's my understanding, Mr. President.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote on this continuing discussion on this item?
Mr. President, moving to close debate, his motion requires a second.
I'll second.
And, but if debate is, if debate is concluded, you can just proceed to vote on the main motion.
Okay, so can we have a roll call vote to conclude debate? The motion, I believe, is to when Mr. or Tom Duval called the question, I believe he was asking for closing the debate motion.
And Manager Patterson seconded it, yes.
And it was second?
Yes.
Okay.
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
So the debate is closed, now can we have a roll call vote on the motion?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Okay, so that concludes our action items. And it appears there's nothing in discussion items. There's perhaps I should ask Administrator Jeffrey, is there any discussion items that you had in mind?
President Siegler, no, no.
Okay. Then the next item is the manager reports.
Yes, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
A moment, I need to bring out my notes. So. Okay, member report. Yeah, one thing I'd like to report on is, is I'm concerned with the process and several things, process that either we're following or followed with regarding District Administrator Jeffrey's review. I'm not sure where we are on that review. You know, we were provided an agenda the day of the meeting, no copies were provided to any of us. No copies of the individual reviews were provided to any of us. There was no time to you know, spend any reasonable amount of period of time to review those reviews. I found the process to date, you know, to be inadequate and so I, I, you know, that's where it's at. I think that Mr. Jeffrey deserves a better, better process than path that we seem to be going down. So that's item number one. Item number two has to do with the budget. And I raise my objection, the fact that, you know, in my opinion, the budget was not adequately summarized in the paper as required under the Minnesota statutes. And just direct one's attention to the Chan House and local paper in which the City of Victoria put in their budget, which was way more than two lines. And I also point out the fact that I couldn't find any reference in the statute where it said that as long as the budget was available somewhere, that that was adequate to meet the requirements of the statute, so again, I repeat my objection to our entire budget process. And then I don't believe it's compliant with the statutes, so I think that's important. The other thing I noticed in the Chan Hassan paper was a solicitation purported to be from our district for pictures, for photos. And I brought this up the last year. I've never seen any agreements for submitters to sign, giving us permission to use it, as you know, there's copyright law that exists and we don't have the appropriate documentation, we're breaching the copyright law every time we publish one of those photographs. And actually, when anybody views them, as far as that goes, so I believe it'd be appropriate at the next meeting to bring forward a proposed agreement, licensing agreement for the submitters to sign, allowing us to appropriately use the photographs. Next item is that I don't recall that we had that issue at this meeting. But the other issues were, I don't believe we are complying with the open meeting law because we're not having copies of documents available for the public to review, in my opinion. Having them flash up on the screen is not compliant with the, with the statutes. And we need to make sure that we have copies of all documents to be reviewed or considered by the board available on the website at the time of the meeting, so that people have something that they can, they can look at. And I've already mentioned this, but I believe President Siegler is in agreement, I think we should, we need to be having recorded meetings of our committees so that, you know, members of the public can review them at their leisure, you know, I know that the number of these committee meetings are held during the day when most people, it's impossible for them to attend and to participate. And so I, again, I believe that we should be reporting those, all those meetings for people to review, and I encourage the CAC to also report their meetings so that the public has an idea of the various discussions that go on at the CAC meeting. Give me one minute. I'll also, again, I just forgot to add it with respect to the review process for Administrator Jeffrey, I think that just proves why we need and why I have continuously stated that we need an HR professional to guide us through this process, in my opinion, we keep making maybe not the same mistakes, but new mistakes on having appropriate review process. And that that should, process should be discussed in advance and agreed to by the Board of Managers, at least have an opportunity to discuss that, that process. Also, as I stated, we need to have, I'll bring this up. We need to have an IT review, the statutes require us to have a update our security procedures, and it also provides that we can have a closed session to discuss our security procedures. And I call upon staff to schedule that as one of our meetings so that we have a handle on who's doing what as far as our IT and the degree to which our systems are secure. And it's my understanding, asking questions, we don't have anybody on staff who has IT certifications, I could be wrong, and if I am, I'd like to know about them. But, you know, there's a no, you're tired of me hearing about making statements, there's an old saying out there, do what you do best and let others do the rest. And I think that particularly applies in several areas, HR, IT, engineering and accounting. So I'm just looking down my list. Oh, and also, I'm having difficulties being able to find copies, assignments, et cetera, and I believe the statute, excuse me, the rules adopted by Vows are specifically require us to have minutes available on our website. And I, for one, have not been able to find all of our minutes that we've adopted. And on the topic of minutes, we have resolutions and it's easy enough to do, believe we should be making a reference to the resolutions, hot links to documents. That way, if somebody wants to see what the resolution is, they can simply hit the hot link on the PDF of the minutes and be taken right to the signed resolutions, that's a a fairly easy thing to do if you, if you know what you're doing and hopefully the administrative person we hire will be doing that. And on that final note, I'd like to see what the list of duties are going to be for that additional administrative person. I actually think we could probably use, you know, seven days a week for several months at least, just to get our house in order. So that's the that's all I have for right now, thank you. Oh, excuse me. I don't know if this will come up later, but is there a time for the audit and Finance Committee meeting on the thirteenth?
It is at nine thirty AM.
And will you be sending out notices?
They will go out the way they always go with that email, the blanket email.
Very good. Thank you, that's all I have at this time.
Admin, I'm sorry. Manager Patterson, did you have any manager reports?
I didn't.
Okay. Manager Crafton?
Yeah, I have a question. Is Josh on?
He sure is.
Yep.
Um, did the St. Anthony Falls person contact you?
Uh, no, I have not had any correspondence with St. Anthony lab.
Okay, I got a call from my friend in Detroit Lake City, Chuck Becker, who's been working on the wake boat thing. And he was talking to, was it Jeff Meyer, Mar? Anyway, somebody at, at that lab about some testing they're doing with wake boat stuff, and so he was wanting me to bring it up, and I suggested that that person contact you, you know, have a discussion so that that you'd be appraised of it and that you were the link that made more sense than for me to try to bring something up, so I was just curious as to whether they reached out to you or not. My understanding was that there was an interest in talking to you, so if you get a call, don't be surprised.
All right.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Are we on administrative?
Oh, we're still on the manager reports, I was going to Manager Duval, do you have anything to report?
No, I don't. Other than getting set for a number of meetings coming up.
Okay. So I just have a couple of things. Administrator Jeffrey had sent around, or at least he sent me something on the president saying that the pandemic is coming to an end here. Kind of giving notice. I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but
May.
So they're saying May, sometime in May?
No, it sounds like May first, is my understanding.
So it seems like we should be ready. So it seems like we should be ready, um, with, you know, whatever changes we're gonna make to the. Uh, office facility for distancing or whatever. And, uh, you know, at least have a plan for. What we're gonna do as far as, um. Anybody from the public trying to. Or presenters trying to come in remotely so they don't have to be there. Even though the voting managers all will have to be there.
Uh, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, I'm, I'm just, on, on your note, uh, about the, uh, you know, pandemic. Um. Yeah, my understanding is it's unclear right now, but. There's just certain things that are going to be. I, I guess terminated, uh, possibly as of May, but I also. Noted that the, uh, World Health Organization. Uh, has stated they're taking it three months at a time. Uh, and making their decision, you know, giving. Depends on what happens, obviously, during. Uh, you know, the winter season in the northern hemisphere. But I just, uh, I just wanted to point that out, and also it's my understanding that, uh. The ultimate determination of whether or not there's. Uh, a risk, et cetera, of a pandemic. Uh, ultimately, I believe lies with you and or Mr. Smith under the statute. So. Just because. Perhaps, you know, the United States government. Uh, takes away certain. Kind of matters concerning the pandemic. I don't know that that necessarily means that, um. We have to cease having Zoom meetings, but it certainly is a factor that. I would imagine that we would all take that into consideration in deciding whether or not to go back. Into, uh. Live session and, and on that basis. I, um, I believe, uh. Administrator Jeffrey had mentioned that, that I believe that was going to be. I think it was in the staff report that that was going to be discussed at one of these meetings, and perhaps that's. An item for discussion at the next workshop. Including not only, uh, I guess arrangements of our offices, but I'd also like. Uh, to have some information on the extent to which the HVAC system has been. Has been upgraded, if at all, uh, to be a, I don't even remember what the level was, there's some. Uh, there's some particular level. Of filtration that is recommended for buildings. And I believe has actually been required by a number of, or a number of industries. But I'm wondering if we can't get a report on that and have a discussion of that. Perhaps, uh, one of the upcoming, uh, work sessions. Is that finished?
Okay, um. I, that's all I had, um. So that brings us to the administrator reports.
Mr. President?
Mr. Smith?
Before we leave manager reports, at some point in the meeting, we should provide a summary. Of Mr. Jeffrey's performance evaluation. Um, we can do it. Here under manager reports, or, um. I could read, uh, I sent you a, a draft summary in, in email that would be in your inbox if you. Wish, or I could read it, or however you like to proceed, but it's such as something we need to do at this meeting.
Uh, this seems like an appropriate way, where, place to do it, so rather than me. Uh. Trying to read the email now, maybe you could give us the summary.
Very good. The managers met in closed session on January twenty-sixth for the purpose of a performance evaluation of the administrator Terry Jeffrey. The board rated Mr. Jeffrey's performance satisfactory and voted to provide a two percent salary increase.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Um. I, I just want to, uh, again, mention, uh, my concern over. The process, we were not given an opportunity to discuss items with Mr. Jeffrey, in fact, I. Again, I was unclear exactly where the process was, or was, or wasn't going to be ended. And again, I have to repeat that, uh. I believe that process. It's not, uh. Was not a best management practice, particularly since we didn't have an opportunity to have a discussion with Mr. Jeffrey. Or did we have an opportunity to have a discussion regarding the various managers' comments? So, uh, I think that needs to be part of the summary.
Administrator Jeffrey, do we have any, uh, administrator reports?
President Ziegler, managers, I just want to give you a quick update on where we're at with the audit process, um. The engagement, uh, agreement went over to ABDO this afternoon, uh, there was a little back and forth about, uh, different elements, but. Um, it has been, uh, reviewed with, uh, Mr. Welch. And it will be signed. They have, uh, I've already provided to them. The, um, release of information letters that they'll be sending to Smith Partners, um, to our accountant. Uh, to our bank and to 4M Fund, and April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Um, are the days that they will be doing their fieldwork, um, in the office. Uh, reviewing our stuff, it's, it's to be determined if they're gonna do it remotely or in the office or some combination thereof. Um, they have provided us with the, um. Online repository for where we need to start uploading our data, and I will. Go over that in some detail with the Audit and Finance Committee, uh, at the thirteenth. And then the other, uh, item I wanted to bring out is watershed-based implementation funding. Processes underway, invites have been sent to all of our partners, that would be, uh, Head of Accounting. Scott, or Carver County, Carver County SWCD, all of our municipalities, um, the. The criteria is that it must be a project that is identified in either. The Carver County Groundwater Plan. Or within our ten-year plan. Um, we will be meeting as each, each of these entities will be, uh, electing one or two representatives to come to that meeting. Uh, they have until next Wednesday to provide that list of who will be the following Wednesday, we will meet and go over those. Um, potential projects, and then it needs to be a decision amongst those members, um, of what projects we will. Apply the watershed-based implementation funding to, there is one hundred and four thousand and change available to that. Um, for that usage, so that is underway, I'll give you more updates as we, uh, come up with. With what the partners would like to do. That's all I have for administrators report.
So from, uh, Riley Perg, there'll be two representatives from staff, is that correct?
Riley Perg is the facilitator, y- but yes, I will have Engineer Sowjak. Likely be there, we can see he's most familiar with the capital projects that we have on the books.
Okay. Uh, any other questions regarding the administrator update?
Uh, Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
And a couple of items off of the, uh, the staff report. Um. I, I, I guess, uh, I'd start on, on page one, I just wanted to, uh. I, I note here that, uh, Nancy Martenson, the, I guess, the. Accountant, Roy Path is, uh, retiring. And, uh. I hope that we would get an introduction, whoever is taking her place. Um, like to know that their, their capabilities. And experience, um. I would like to, uh, refer under administration person job description, we haven't been given. Copy of the job description. I'd like to see us have that, perhaps at the workshop, so we can provide comments before we end up voting on it. Um. And, uh. And, and I assume that we're gonna be talking about the board furniture configurations, should we go back to? Uh. I guess, uh, in-person, uh, meetings. One item I did want to come up with was, uh, on page three, under local. Surface water management plans, I noticed that Chan Hassan's. Is that expire in twenty twenty-five?
This is correct, the, so the final dates on all of those will be December thirty-first of that year would be when their plan is up, so for instance. Uh, Chaska and Deep Haven are coming up next year, so they, um. They should be in process of putting together their new plan.
So, so their plan has to be in compliance with our rules, is that correct?
The President Ziegler, Manager Cook, they have to either in their plan, um. Defer to our rules, or. They would have to change their local controls such that they are equally protected to ours. Um, the rest of the plan needs to comply with, just comply with our, our plan, so we'll review their plan. Against our plan and then make comments to them as to what would need to change. But if they just keep the local or regulatory program with us, then they don't have to do anything with their, other than acknowledge that the watershed district has that authority.
The reason I ask the question is, uh. I assume it takes, what, a year to get revisions to our rules through?
Oh, every bit of that, yes, yep.
So, uh, I would like to see us make it a priority to, uh, immediately address our rules. Get that process started so that we have rules in place. Uh, before the end of twenty twenty-five. Uh, to address, you know, various issues, including shoreline protections, et cetera. Or, um. For Chan Hassan and Fort Lake, so I, I bring that up, um. You know, you have, uh, the legislative briefing is on February fourteenth and sixteenth, is. Anybody, anybody, can other of us attend if we want to or not?
President Ziegler, managers, um. I believe it's open to anyone to attend as far as whether the, the. Board would treat it as, you know, being, being authorized to attend, there is a hundred dollar, um, ticket to go to it. Um. President Ziegler is attending, um, and I am attending the, the Maua portion of it, which is the first day. Um, I have actually put in calls to, um. To Senators Wazinski, as well as, uh, Minnesota congressional representatives inviting them. Um, to that, and also asking, um, if I could speak to them based upon the resolutions that were put forward by Maude. Or, excuse me, Minnesota Water, well, there's still Maude until they adopt, so. But.
Well, uh, you know, I'd actually like to, uh, plan to attend, and I would. Like to see in the future that this be. Put on the agenda, you know. Early enough that it could be addressed in the future. Um.
I, I believe we can still address it now, if there's a motion. If there's other people that want to attend. It's just in the last few years, we've kind of gotten lax because. Um, it takes up time, it ends up being. Um, fairly long. But, um, you know, I would think that we could have a motion that. Um. The watershed would pay the fee. And pay a per diem for anyone who wanted to attend.
Well, I'd like to so move, if, if that would be in order.
I'll second the motion, then. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, um, and I guess I'm saying anyone, any manager who wanted to attend. Um, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith? Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
He was struggling, he was all in the waiting room and I had to let him back in, so he might be off again.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Manager Duval? Motion carries four to zero. Administrator Jeffrey, can you send him an email saying that, uh, you know, what the vote was, and if, if he's interested? Uh, to go to the. Legislative event. Okay, um, anything else on the, uh? Uh, where were we?
Yeah, Mr.
Administrator report?
I just had a couple of items, um, you, I know the mention, developing a GIS database catalog soil data collected. Um, the reason I bring this up is my understanding is that Carver County. And I believe maybe the US Geological Service, uh, has a lot of data. Already, and I, because I recall a presentation by Carver County, I think it was, uh, regarding our soils. Um, uh, drain, uh, because of infiltration, et cetera, et cetera, and the difference between the western part of the district. And, and versus the eastern part of the district, so I encourage us to make sure we take full advantage of data that already. Uh, exists out there. Um, and I also note that I believe. Uh, NASA launched a new satellite which has some extreme capabilities of mapping waters. And, uh, that, uh, I would encourage that we look into that, uh. Apparently very accurate. Uh, in, in measuring waters. Uh, let me see here, start like. Uh, mentions on page five, under education outreach, says staff continue to update district website as needed. And I submitted, uh, a number of, uh, comments and suggestions, I'd appreciate a, a response for them. Uh, on them. And, um, also it states there that, uh. There's been a draft of the twenty twenty-three, uh, education outreach work plan. Wondering when we can be able to see that, and if you could get, get a copy of that, if we're not otherwise gonna have a presentation on it. Hang with me one moment, but, um, I have a couple of questions, are we finished? With the Hennebin County Chloride Initiative? Is that done?
President Ziegler, managers, yes, it is done, um, it will be, we had train the trainer, uh, yesterday, that was extremely well attended. Um, we still have some more things just to roll out and fully implement, but the grant period has ended, the. HCCI group has disbanded, although there was discussion this morning about continuing to get on a less formal basis and just. Uh, reconvening regularly to, to kind of share ideas and think where they can go. Um, so yes, we could, we could have that presented to you at some point in a work session as well, what the final product is.
I, well, I think that would be a good idea, and I think that, uh, some type of continuing, uh. Continuation of that chlorine initiative. Uh, would be a good idea, that's, as I understand, that's one of our. Primary issues that we have in the metro area is the, is, um. Excess use of salt, et cetera. I mean, you know. So. And, and for us to sponsor, uh. Training sessions, I hope we do that, or looking to include that in the budget, just not for this year, for next year. Um. Where are we done? I guess it possible to get a copy of the revised craft scores for the. For the tributaries, at least the Bluff Creek one?
Yes, that would be possible.
Manager Cook, are you, are you done?
That's it, that's, I was just looking at my notes, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Um, so we were on the, uh, administrator reports. I see there's an item B, I guess the acronym doesn't. Pop out, it may as being WBIF update?
Yep, that was the watershed-based implementation funding that I.
Okay, okay. So are we done with the administrator reports?
Yeah, I have nothing else, thank you.
Okay, um, moving on, uh, legal counsel reports?
Nothing else to add this evening? Nothing else to add this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see. Administrator, I'm sorry, manager Duval is back. So. So we voted while you were gone and approved participation in the legislative event.
Okay.
If you're. Want to go the. Watershed would pay for your ticket plus pay a per diem.
Okay.
Okay. Upcoming board topics. Is there anything other than the legislate or the? Yeah, legislative meeting. That we need to talk about?
Don't think so at this time.
Okay, upcoming events. Does anybody know if if February Fest is on? It seems like it's been cold enough. The ice should be thick.
It got canceled today.
Canceled today.
Oh, it did.
Yep.
Okay.
Inconsistent ice on the lake.
Well, there is a lot of snow.
Yeah, they're concerned about trucks going out and those types of items.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
You know, given that it's canceled, like I know there was another event I'm going to talk to that I just read about it was canceled. So. I understand that the problem is we don't have any clear ice. Apparently the melting in that is what causes. Cause the biggest problem, but I would like for the next year, if we're going to have it. I'd like to get some idea of. Sometime before next year of what we're going to do, the booths. I thought I heard you got some signs. And I also made a couple of suggestions and I'd like to see is maybe a volunteer manning of the booth. By various people with its staff managers, et cetera. Consider that for next year and. I think they even mentioned, you know, maybe we can get some of those yellow. Vests, you know, with Riley pretty great both creeks stenciled on them. That the volunteers could could wear while we're there, but since we're not having that, hopefully next year we can have our ducks and rill. All I have. Thank you.
So we haven't picked a date for the. Lake Association Summit yet, or did we? Oh, February twenty first?
Correct, it is February twenty first.
Okay. And. Is that? Something the managers are invited to or?
President Ziegler managers, it'd be my preference that the managers do not attend simply for notification and. When we tried to hold something in person, managers. Don't want to be in person, so I I don't want to have to cancel event or otherwise modify it. So it'd be my preference that they do not attend.
Okay, but maybe we can get the presentation at some point?
Yes, absolutely. Give you the presentation.
Okay. The Riley Perg Summit date is still be to be determined?
Yeah, that's still pending. February got pretty booked up. And then we started getting into the busy season, so it may end up being a. Late summer event or a fall event, but.
And our volunteer recognition event? If we wait long enough, we can do it outside.
Well, Mr. President, I I actually think it's a good idea to hold these things outside. Actually, it'd be nice to hold it up. Somewhere where we could maybe see something that the volunteers worked on. So it's just a thought I throw out there.
Okay, anything else that anybody feels we need to talk about?
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I move that we adjourn.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Smith? Manager Crafton?
Dave Frost now.
Yeah.
Yes.
I said, yes, I didn't know where we are here.
As you cook?
Yes.
Andrew Patterson?
Yes.
President Siegler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Have a good evening.